All right, thank you for coming to our public meeting on January 2nd, 1st of the year. Would you please join me in the pledge?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it looks like we have a few public hearings for today. Before we jump in, I would encourage any of our guests to sign in. There should be a place to sign in. All right, our current claims list, claims received as of December 4th, 2019 to December 19th, 2019, by the commission's office, total $3,148,775.15. Thank you. Any public comment not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will dive into our first hearing. Sam is here.
All right, I am Sam Scott with the clerk and recorder's office. The clerk and recorder has received a petition to abandon a public road. The road petition to be abandoned is described as the north end of General Pulaski Drive and Rimick Swan River Track 1, ending at the south boundary of 167 General Pulaski Drive, also known as Why Not Lane, in Condon, Montana, Section 1, Township 20 North, Range 17 West. A notice of hearing has been published twice in the Missoulaian. The petition has been signed by 10 freeholders of the road district and all affected landowners have been contacted. I don't know if Steve has any comment before we open it to the submitters?
Steve, 9A, surveyor's office for the county. Is the petitioner or representative here? I would like to hear from them first.
Good afternoon. Lynn Stanley with Montana Northwest Company. I think Sam has most of the details, but basically what this is all about is an aggregation of land. The landowner owns all the land at the end of the road. And where we are petitioning to stop the road is at the beginning of their property. There's one landowner at the adjacent or at the very end of the road who also has other ways to get in. He's also signed the petition and wrote a letter that he is in agreeance with doing the road vacation.
Any questions?
None, other than this is just the initial hearing of this, so I'm assuming we'll need to schedule a road.
Do a visit?
Is that correct, Steve?
I'd like to ask one question. I did not see, the parcel outlined there is owned by William Barr. I didn't see his name on the petition. Did he since sign?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It was updated and he signed. I don't have the date, but.
Okay. Okay, then I don't have an issue with the petition at all, and we should just go ahead and try to set a viewing.
So we need to set up a visit?
You're up, but I guess.
All right.
I guess not.
We'll do it. We'll do it. Okay, we'll say it, and we'll come up with a time.
Okay. Yeah, just have her get ahold of me.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Can we just set a date for when we'll have the second hearing?
What do you think?
January 30th or February 6th, whichever.
Could we do February 6th? Then it gives us plenty of time to get this visit done.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, thanks a lot. So our next public hearing about the Stevenson family transfer.
Oh, any public.
Sorry, man. Any public comment on this potential road vacation? Seeing none, we'll jump to the hearing on the Stevenson family transfer. Matt with some staff comment. Staff report.
Is it on? Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Matt Heimel for the record, planner with Missoula County Community Planning Services. Your consideration is this family transfer exemption request. This is a request from Amy Stevenson to use a family transfer exemption in the Montana Subdivision of Plating Act to create and transfer one parcel to her mother, Kathleen Shipton. The property is located at 1515535 South Sperry Grade Road, located south of Highway 200 and west of the Blackfoot River. This image shows the existing tract layout. It is a five-acre tract on the west side of South Sperry Grade Road. The proposed tract layout includes one new two-and-a-half acre lot for Amy's mother, with the remaining approximately 2.5 acres to remain under the claimant's ownership. The parent tract was acquired through a warranty deed on October 10th, 2019. Subject property currently has one dwelling and three accessory structures. The land to be transferred is vacant. The portion of land to be transferred, which is the south two-and-a-half acres. The applicant has stated that the transfer tract is intended for residential use by the applicant, and access to the proposed tract will be located off of South Sperry Grade Road. The property is unzoned and located within the area described in the Missoula County Growth Policy and 2010 Sealy Lake Plan. The growth policy recommends one dwelling per 10 acres. The proposed transfer in the property will exceed the density recommended by the growth policy. As with any family transfer exemption request, we review the rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria for the evasion of subdivision review. There were four of those general criteria triggered by this, by our analysis of this proposal. The first of which is that the tract is the result of prior exemptions, namely, an occasional sale filed in May of 1987. The second is that the claimant is the owner of property as of October 10th, 2019. The property was previously in joint ownership between Amy and Brandon Stevenson. That was changed to be solely under Amy's name so that this property could be eligible for a family transfer request. The third criteria is that this tract will share access with other tracts that were created through exemptions, and it also fits a pattern of a general site layout of certain acreage that matches prior exemptions also in the area. And the fourth presumption that it met is that the lot exceeds the density recommended in the growth policy. Namely, it will be one dwelling per two-and-a-half acres where the growth policy recommends one per 10 acres. This application was sent out to county agencies for comment. Most agencies provided a standard response with no comments of concern on the proposal. The environmental health department did comment that the sanitation and subdivision review will be required for this property. Based on the facts as presented in the exemption affidavit and after staff's review, there does not appear to be an attempt to evade subdivision review. I now have some questions for the applicant. Hello.
Hi.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Amy Stevenson.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Thank you. Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
We did. Before we knew about the exemption for family, we had started the process a little bit.
Before you knew, and then you discovered that this was an option?
Mm-hmm.
Will the property be developed?
Yes.
Will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Yes.
Thank you. Those are all the questions of staff.
Thank you.
Would you like to add anything? You're welcome to if you want.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, I have a question. Maybe I misunderstood this. The south half, or Amy, I guess, the south half. It's on the background section, says that the parent tract remained in ownership by the claimant would reduce to 2.5 acres on the south half of the subject property. The tract to be transferred to the claimant's mother would be the 2.5 acres on the north half. So do I, am I confused? Okay.
That is backwards.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah, just a question for Ms. Stevenson. Thanks for joining us today. So just to be clear, your mother will actually be residing on this parcel?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you.
Did I hear Matt say correctly that you bought this in October?
No, that's when we filed, I believe.
It was previously under joint ownership between Amy and Brandon Stevenson. It was since transferred only to Amy so it could be eligible for.
I see, for this purpose. Okay.
And then, are you related to the Stephenson's further south?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my brother, or my husband's brother and his wife, yes.
Great, because I think I've met you before. Yes, not in biking.
Probably my brother, but yeah, we know about.
I'm sorry, I guess we can't be talking. You have to come up to the microphone and like, state your name. But, okay, so I just want to make sure I have it right in my head. Same family?
Yes.
Got it, okay. And then I guess my mother owns the property south of you guys, so that's, I'm just wanting to get it clear in my head. Yeah.
You guys have any other questions?
I do not, other than public comment, maybe.
Anybody, any public comment on this? Would gladly take a motion.
Okay, I would move that we approve the application by Amy Stevenson to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to an immediate family member as presented in the subdivision exemption affidavit.
And I'll second, and I guess, I know we all kind of feel, is this, we kind of get worried about going through this by piecemeal and, you know, this kind of haphazard, in a sense, development. But I feel like for this particular site and this particular area that this isn't detrimental to kind of the direction that we're trying to go.
Yeah, I would likewise concur. I generally do not like to, or I take very seriously the instances when we approve a density of development that exceeds what's recommended in our growth policy. And in this case, the pattern of development, as you can see in the graphic on the screen, already does not comply with the recommendations in the growth policy, which does not always mean that we just throw in the towel and add additional non-conformity, if you will. But I think under the circumstances, this makes sense. And what I would like to see happen countywide is an updating of our land use mapping that better accords with our vision for what's on the ground.
That does seem to be what's in order here. So there's a motion out there.
Oh, that was the second. That was the second.
Thanks. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Welcome your mother to Grino.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, next up is a public hearing on amendments to the Missoula County subdivision regs with a staff report from Christine D'Senzo. Thanks, Matt. Yeah. The north and south are wrong.
That'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Matt? He has something for you.
Good catch there.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Christine D'Senzo, planner with Community and Planning Services. Happy 2020. Today, I have a staff report on proposed changes to the subdivision regulations. And the scope of those changes are, we tried to keep it fairly narrow on two main areas. The first, we wanted to update the urban and rural area distinction based on the land use designation updates from 2019. And that's in Chapter 3. A minor change in Chapter 3 is also an update to the hazards list for more inclusive and representative list. And then also incorporating changes from state law on phase developments. And then there's some miscellaneous sort of copy edits and format changes throughout in an attempt to be clearer. So we have proposed amendments on Chapter 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and Appendix A, the urban area. And just a little history on public notice and the timeline to date. On November 3rd and 10th, there was a legal ad in the Missoulaian. We went to Planning Board on November 19th and December 3rd, and ran another legal ad on December 9th and 15th, and then have today's hearing in front of the commissioners. We also did outreach through the CAPS email news list, newsletters, the list, and some face-to-face agency meetings. So I'm going to dive into Chapter 3. We have, we'll start on the hazards. So staff is proposing the inclusion of a new hazard in Section 3.1.3.3H to acknowledge high groundwater. And this hazard would be triggered when groundwater is found within 10 feet of the surface, as well as areas designated as floodplain. Some mitigation examples that we're also including in 3.1.3.4C.5 mitigation would include examples of mitigation that are prohibiting basements and then limiting the depth of a structure. We are also including sort of a catch-all hazard, other hazards. And we're defining that as other natural or human-created hazards as identified on or near the property to be subdivided. So that just sort of captures things we may not have explicitly considered in our current list of hazards. And then another change we're seeing, we're including in Section 3.1.3.6, a 2 access. So this applies to areas where there's only one access, and that area is, or that access is subject to flooding. So we want applicants to be able to show that during a 100-year flood event, floodwaters would not be deeper than one foot. And that's just a depth that's been shown to be able to move cars. So we want it to be lower than that. And then still in Chapter 3, but moving on to the urban and rural standards and that update. For the Missoula area, we propose changing how the urban area is determined. So rather than using the city's wastewater service area, we're proposing to use the more intense land use designations that came out of the Missoula area mapping project. And so those would be designations recommending densities of three dwelling units per acre or greater, but would not include heavy industrial. So we want to also maintain the low-low water study area included in the urban area and eliminate the requirement that the commissioners review the boundaries annually. That was more relevant when there was a different jurisdiction sort of in charge of the boundary, with the city being the jurisdiction in charge of the wastewater boundary. So now that they're both county entities, we are suggesting that we eliminate that annual review, which wasn't actually occurring either. So just a more consistent and reality-based recommendation there. And so if any of the boundaries are changed, it would be the boundary in place at the time of sufficiency for that subdivision that would determine urban versus rural standards. And on page 3-19, we have Section 3.4.2.1, where we have the new intent for the urban area. And that reads, "It is the intent of these regulations that the urban areas include land that is serviceable by a community or municipal sewer or water system, and/or is able to support densities of at least two dwelling units per acre." And one change we're proposing is that exceptions only apply, exceptions to the urban area only apply to residential subdivisions. And so that's, there's three factors that go into exceptions to urban standards, and they all have to be triggered in order for an exception to apply. And so those are on Section 3.4.2.1C, page 3-20. And they include that the majority of the lots are one acre or greater, that there are no utility infrastructure present, and that there's no through connection. So it's sort of a rural character that is being subdivided into a rural character and would not have to apply the urban standards. So when all of those are true, the rural standards apply. The proposed change would make this exception only available to residential subdivisions. And the logic there is just that commercial and industrial developments and subdivisions require those higher standards because they see a broader range of users. So we wouldn't apply the exception to commercial or industrial subdivisions. And then in the rural area, we have Section 3.4.2.2, rural area, and that's on page 21. And so here we see that updated intent section for the rural area, and that reads, "It is the intent of these regulations that the rural area include land that is not serviceable by a community or municipal water or sewer system, and is not able to support densities of three dwelling units per acre or greater." So anything that's not considered rural is considered urban. Sorry, anything that's not considered urban is considered rural. And there is additional sort of reformatting in this section to better match the rural section with the urban, just so those flows are similar. And to make those triggers for the exceptions easier to follow, similar to the urban area. And so here's just a visual on what's proposed for those boundaries. We have the current boundary from the wastewater service area, and then the proposed is based on those land use designations. And here's how those sort of compare overlaid with the green being the urban area proposed. And the black line, if you can see it, is the current boundary. So you can see there's some expansions outside of that boundary, and some more rural areas are, you know, sort of shrunk within that boundary. And then we have, from the planning board, we got a recommendation for approval of the subdivision regulations and the amendments, but they did add a caveat that changed, recommended a change to the intent sections of the urban area. And that focused on the density. There was just sort of a perceived inconsistency using two different numbers of at least two dwelling units per acre, and then in the rural area, basing it on three dwelling units per acre. And so their recommendation is to change Section 3.4.2.1 from at least two dwelling units per acre to at least three dwelling units per acre, per their discussion on December 3rd. So that's sort of highlighted there. And then as we look at, here's the rural area and how that reads, with it not being able to support densities of three dwelling units per acre or greater. So staff is recommending either don't make that change because it would not include the sort of low-low area or areas with sewer that can hold a density of two dwelling units per acre or greater. This is trying to have that more consistency, and we can do that by changing the rural area rather than the urban area, and then maintaining those densities, capturing those densities in low-low. So that change in the rural area could look something like this, so that it's not able to support densities greater than two dwelling units per acre. And I think that would achieve the consistency that the planning board's looking for. So I have a motion, some text on that towards the end, if you want to go that way. The whole thing? For rural area? Or, okay. Yep, get it on the record. Section 3.4.2.2, rural area. "It is the intent of these regulations that the rural area include land that is not serviceable by a community or municipal sewer or water system, and is not able to support densities greater than two dwelling units per acre." All, period. "All unincorporated areas of the county outside of the urban areas shall be, the rural area for the purposes of these regulations." You're welcome, thanks.
Thanks, Christine.
You're welcome.
I have more.
Oh, keep going.
I have so.
Sorry.
So we'll keep going in Chapter 3. We have page 3-26, urban area requirements. And this would change the determining factor for urban area non-motorized infrastructure, away from the number of lots and toward the density. So a similar thing from the urban area in rural area. And that would be based on a density of eight units per acre or greater. So the current regulations use a number of lots and use a, if a subdivision is proposing fewer than 40 lots, then they can choose to install sidewalks on either one side of the road or both sides of the road. It would be a wider sidewalk if it was just on one side of the road. And then if you had 40 lots or more, it would be that required that you have sidewalk on both sides of the street. And so this changes that determination away from the number of lots toward that recommended density. So any designation that recommends eight units per acre or greater would be required to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And that's shown in Appendix A as well, and that's the hashed mark that you see here. So anywhere that's sort of, that shaded hashed area would require sidewalk on two sides of the road. And then we have a little numbering fix and reformatting in the rural area requirements on page 3-27. And then we also include an option for off-road pedestrian trails. And this currently exists in the urban area. So if a trail can either connect to an existing off-road trail or the subdivision is large enough that it's sort of a standalone trail, that's another option to meet that requirement for non-motorized facilities. Just a little more consistency throughout. So now we'll move over to Chapter 5, and this is more process and that state law change focused on phase development. And before we get to phase development, just on preliminary plats. And this is, so those unphased developments. You can have an extension of a preliminary plat, and the text is just basically reformatted. It looks sort of like an extreme change with all that red, but most, there's no new content here. It's just reformatted. And preliminary, and trying to clarify that preliminary plats can be extended beyond the original three-year approval date, but not beyond six years from that original approval. And then in 2016, regulations were overhauled and gave subdivisions approved prior to that 2016 regulation date. So anything approved before those regulations were changed, we sort of gave those subdivisions a new adjusted approval date. And so this is an attempt to clarify that in the text. And we sort of try to point people to the appropriate regulations if they are dealing with phase developments, and just sort of guide people through the regs a little clearer here. And this, sorry, it's state law, and I can't be any more creative than. And this, sorry, it's state law, and I can't be any more creative than a bunch of text. But we have chapter five, this is where we get into phased developments, and we're incorporating those changes from the state, including their requirement that we hold a hearing prior to filing each phase. And it, so it legitimizes and gives authority for phasing plans, which did not exist in state law, but jurisdictions, including Missoula County, were processing phased subdivisions. So this sort of legitimizes those. And, but for those phased subdivisions that existed and were approved prior to these regulations, we sort of have two parallel processes, one for those older subdivisions because we viewed those as being vested in that process that they were approved under. And so we use that May eighth, 2017 approval date to determine which process applies. And so we use the same criteria that in section five point seven point sixteen point three. If you're introducing a subdivision with a phased development, we apply the criteria that was used previously for establishing one after approval. So there was an option previously where you could go through subdivision without it being phased and then come back and request phasing. And we had criteria for that process, and then we're just applying it if you're starting that from the beginning. So not new content, but a new, a move of that content, basically. And in five point seven point sixteen point five, phasing plan extension, trying to clarify that internal process requesting extensions, that extensions can't go beyond three years from the date of the request. So rather than the date of subdivision approval, it's the date of the request. And then on page five dash twenty-six, section five point seven point sixteen point six, this is where sort of those parallel processes come to a head, and we have a maximum, maximum extension for previously approved subdivisions, and then a twenty-year maximum for phased subdivisions that are approved after the 2017 date. And that's just out of state law. And page five dash twenty-eight, we have the procedure for phased developments as applied to modifications. And so modifications include like changes to the number of lots in a phase or the filing sequence of phased developments. And so we just apply the state law there, and that allows a commissioner hearing to determine if there are any changes to the site or new information that applies to that subdivision and could be mitigated by new conditions during that hearing. And that's a new thing from state law. And then on page five thirty-three, five dash thirty-three, sorry, that's wrong on the slide, but it should, it says five dash thirty-four, but it should be thirty-three. We're proposing that we strike a section on those modifications that would require the, for major subdivisions, it would require the applicant to come through the planning board as well as the commission. And just based on the definitions and the reading and process and how that's sort of occurred on, on the ground, we're suggesting that we strike that requirement for planning board. There, the intent is that those are minor changes, and we, staff feels comfortable that that could be handled by the commission and not require staff time or the applicant to go through that additional process. So, and that's also sort of trying to acknowledge that there's a lot of new process coming in on state law, and a little, where we can give, we want to try to do that. So that is phased developments. And just hopping back to chapter three, the definitions chapter, we tie up some loose ends and update the rural area and urban area definitions, and then have a new definition for phased development, just based on that work done in other chapters. And on chapter six, we're getting there. This is focused on final plats. And one change that we're recommending is for remaining tracks of phased developments, that the parent parcel be included in the survey. So currently, phases are often filed without including that parent parcel or the entire parcel that went through subdivision, even though filing that phase changes the configuration of the parent parcel. So by including that parent parcel or the remaining tract of that parent parcel, it'll be easier to track how those phases are affecting that remaining tract, and should be able to, you know, help with process and straightening out history as, as we create it. And then in section three point two point three, sorry, six point two point three, information for final plat. New state law again requires and outlines some process for reviewing information related to final plat. And so that touches on reviewing for missing information, processing resubmittals, and just review periods. So we incorporate that. And then on page six dash seven, in section three, six point three, final plats, commencement of each phase. Again, state law requires a hearing prior to filing each phase. So this outlines the process there, or incorporates the process outlined in state law, including written notice from the applicant, commissioner hearing prior to filing each phase, and the ability for the commissioners to incorporate or impose new conditions to address any new information relevant to that site. And those conditions must be met before filing. So moving on to chapter seven, we have just some assessment process for high groundwater requiring that if high groundwater is found on the site, that the developer has to submit a plan prepared by a licensed engineer to mitigate, to mitigate the groundwater hazard. And then other minor changes throughout the chapter. We did send it out for agency and public comment. You have a table in your packet that outlines comment received from agencies. It looks like this, let me pull it up here. So a number of them were staff sort of reviewed, and we had good conversations with a number of agencies. But a number of them either are sort of outside of the, trying to maintain that narrow scope. And so staff is recommending that we implement the rows in white. And so I'll just go through those, try to be quick. And some of them don't change the content, but I'll just read through them. So in section three point two point four point two, common area, no build, this is relating to riparian areas. And water quality district wanted to recommend that riparian management areas be depicted on the plat. And so they are currently depicted on the plat, and we're just recommending some reformatting to make the two different methods for showing those a little clearer. And then also from water quality district, some concerns about erosion control. And this is just a change that we would make to the subdivision application to update that reference. But they're, they were concerned about cut and fill and plans for erosion control. And we currently require that and clarify that in the application. There's ways to make it clearer. And in section three point one point five point two, a comment from Parks Trails and Open Lands requesting that we measure irrigation trails, irrigation ditches from the edge of the canal. And that's how it is measured when irrigation ditches are wider than three feet. But another reformatting could clarify that. So when they're smaller than three feet, they just measure not from the edge, but from the center of the irrigation ditch. And a request from Parks Trails and Open Lands to require, use, add all to clarify that each requirement is, is required, and it's not an either or for the urban areas to meet, there's a, there's criteria required for those exemptions and exceptions, and just adding all as suggested. Staff has no problem with that. And then from clerk and recorder, we got a comment about contiguous tracks. And so clerk and recorder views land separated by easements as contiguous, but they're not contiguous if separated by a right-of-way. And so we can incorporate that by, in the definition. So adding easement, so public right-of-way easements shall be construed as a budding and therefore contiguous. Oh, sorry. And then in section three point six point seven point one, lots smaller than twenty acres, clerk and recorder was suggesting that we, there was sort of a little bit of text that was relevant beyond what the heading might imply in this section. And so changing the heading from lots smaller, lots smaller than twenty acres to include lots smaller than twenty acres, comma, RVs or mobile homes. Content relating to RVs and mobile homes was just sort of stuck under there, and we want to sort of bring some daylight to that and include it in the heading. And including as amended by any reference to the plat checklist, the final plat checklist. There's just some changes going on with the final plat checklist and how that process goes. So just including that language as amended should be able to capture any future changes to that process. It's going more digital. And so there's, they found some numbering fixes that could happen. There's two sections, six point two point three point four, and so we wanted to not have two sections like that. So we'll amend that numbering and review agencies, changing distributed to, to reviewed by to better reflect that new digital process. That's for distributing final plats for review. And then in section six point two point four point five, surveyor, including references for addressing minor affidavits of correction. And just adding some text, we have a section on it, but wanted to add some text directing people to it, so that would read minor affidavits of corrections can be addressed in accordance with section six point six point two, minor errors before or after examining land surveyor has signed. Six point two point six, filing deadline, requiring a letter of approval for extensions to be included. This is general practice, but to include it in the regulations wasn't seem, didn't seem to be a big deal. So add quote, "And any supplemental documents, including all extension approval letters, shall be filed with filing final plats." In section six point two point seven point two, the maximum extension section, so there's a typo, just adding AL to addition, so it's additional. Six point six point three point one affidavit, add and sealed and strike, I hope we don't take this personally, and strike approved by the county attorney and be.
Struggling for relevance over here.
Hopefully just minimizing process and staff time. But I think from the clerk and recorder, that would reflect how the process goes for those affidavits. In the table seven point five, final plat, submittal requirements, under supplemental documents in abstract of title, sorry about that error, the typo there, but in C six, section seven point seven point two, add and consent if applicable. And we are happy to do that. Section seven point seven point one, remaining tracks less than one hundred and sixty acres for phased developments. Rather than using this submitted upon, when they're, including the remaining tract with phased developments, changing it to surveyed and included on. So that's just all on one piece of paper and won't necessarily be read as needing multiple surveys. Section seven point seven point three, title abstract, clerk and recorder wanted to see a new section written for written consent of the owners. And so just separating those, a little bit of new formatting here. So the new section would be section seven point seven point four, consent by the owners, the written consent to the subdivision by the owners of the land if other than the subdivider and any lien holders or claimants of the record, of record against the land shall be on the face of the plat. Sorry, not the fact of the plat. Okay. And then we got some no comments or we agree or not at this time. So you're not recommending anything with that. That is the agency comment. And then we also got later in the process, so this was, this table came prior to planning board. And later in the process, we got an additional comment from clerk and recorder. They had agreed to draft up some text, and we just didn't get it prior to planning board. But on comment twenty-seven in that table, it was just an info box relating to easements. And so this is the proposed language from clerk and recorder. There's, some issues can arise when easements are placed upon parcels when there's contiguous ownership. So when a party owns two contiguous parcels, sometimes easements are applied to one parcel, but it's the same party that's sort of benefiting and writing the easement. So just sort of some language that when creating an easement, Missoula County recommends consulting with legal counsel to ensure the easement's validity. And that would just appear as an info box sort of throughout to guide subdividers or people interested in subdivision. Wherever there's mention of requiring easements, just sort of give that additional guidance. And then we did get some public comment, nothing at planning board, but after planning board, we received a comment related to Dunn Blaker Lot One. So it's a pretty specific parcel comment, voicing concerns about drainage there and requesting that it not be, that parcel Dunn Blaker Lot One not be included in Appendix A as eight units per acre or greater. And that would, that change is sort of outside the scope of what staff is proposing here. It would require a growth policy amendment. Here we go. And just some history on this specific parcel, which we can see here. It was approved for storage units in 2018 through the buildings for lease or rent process. And so it's this parcel at the Y here. And it's, the land use designation there is commercial center. And in that designation, oh, sorry. Now I got lost. Oh, there we are. In that designation, in an attempt to, let me get this good one here, allow housing options throughout the, or not prevent or prohibit housing in more areas and allow it in greater number of designations. The commercial center designation allows for buildings generally ranging from small to large and residential densities of eight units per acre or greater, requiring connections to public sewer and water. So there's a lot that goes into getting that density, and a lot is going into that, would go into that in this site. There's a lot of drainage issues, and those are known. There's also a zoning application in our office on this parcel specifically, in an order to connect to city sewer. So zoning is required currently, it's unzoned, and the request would be for general commercial. And some staff conditions on that to address those known drainage, drainage issues out there would address it by prohibiting basements and requiring construction a minimum of two feet above that highest elevation. And so that application goes to planning board on January seventh, and the commissioners on January third. But for this project, staff doesn't recommend a change. And I think that's all I have on that one. And there's potential comment coming in. I don't know, I'll pre-empt it maybe, but there was comment or conversations with some folks out of target range that we include prime and important agricultural soils on Appendix A. And so similarly, that's sort of outside the scope of the update. And so similarly, that's sort of outside the scope of the update and what appendix A is trying to do. So it's trying to focus on that urban area and showing those soils. Staff is thinking, might not be the best place to do that. When subdivisions are reviewed in our office, every subdivision gets looked at for agricultural soils. And this is just a limited in scope. It's not a countywide map and we're hoping that it not be, in order to maintain its usability for the urban area. But yes, we would recommend not including those soil maps on this map and rather use the subdivision review process to look at the site-specific soils. Often if you get soils of importance or prime ag soils, developers look at it with a finer tooth comb and get even better detailed maps than what we would be able to apply here. So we're recommending no change to appendix A. And so I have a recommended motion if you want to make that change to the rural area, a recommended motion if you want to include the info box about easements, and a recommended motion for the whole project. And that's the end of my staff report.
Thanks, Christine. So it appears we have a full contingency from Target Range. I imagine you guys are here to speak to the numbering change on the final plat checklist. I was joking, I was joking. You're not ready for that? So please come speak if you'd like. Just let us know who you are before you start. Thanks.
I'll be the first one in the shoot out here. My name's Larry Nagy. I'm the business manager for Target Range Sewer and Water District. We were just notified two days ago about these changes and they're pretty extensive. As soon as I found out about it, I started contacting our board members. And one of our board members was one of the ones that contacted me about this and they got it from another individual. And I was wondering, since Target Range Sewer and Water has been around for 20 years, we are a state chartered water district, sewer and water district, been around, like I said, for 20 years. We've had a number of expansions. And our major effort on this document, I hope you all got and was able to read pretty quick, was that the mission of the Target Range Sewer and Water District is to protect our aquifer. That was our number one. I don't get it. We are a full-fledged sewer and water district. We can do anything that our constituents would like, but the main thing is that we wanted to protect our way of life out in the valley. When I got this information on the changes that you guys were due, I noticed that on the appendix A, that you go coming into, all the way into Tower, one of the roads that are in the district out there. Well, that is about six to eight blocks within our district. And our question was, why weren't we not informed about this? You know, we are a state entity, you know, as far as the district is concerned. Why didn't we get this? And looking at the changes, which I printed out all the chapters and sections that there's changes to, and seeing the density changes in requests that we're going through. And out where we're at, you know, we have one house per acre. And we do have some other areas that do have multiple, more than one house that were grandfathered in quite a while ago. The city has moved their sewers out onto Third and down to Big Sky High, but that's where they stop. And when I looked at this density housing and looked at everything that was going on in our district, our chartered district, and not being notified, not only myself as the business manager, but also the president of our board not being notified. And we keep on pretty up-to-date stuff. DEQ, we talk to DEQ all the time, Department of Health, DNRC, any new development in our area, we check out to make sure it is legal within the wells, proximity to the sewage septic system and so forth like that. So when we got this, when I received this and started looking at it and talking to some other members of the district, it became very important to me and to the board members that I talked to, to see if we could get time for us to meet with our constituents about this, because nobody had received anything on this or had been notified about this. So then I went to some of our homeowners association, talked to them. They weren't aware of anything. I mean, you're talking quite a few thousand people out there. And why wasn't this sent to us? I don't know and I don't understand why, especially since we are a pretty high-profile outfit out there. We are always around, we check everything out we possibly can. We work with a lot of developers, we work with a lot of different state and local agencies about our mission statement was to protect the aquifer. And not having received this, we are recommending or asking that you table this for at least four months, to have us get with our legal counsel advisors and see why we did not receive it in the first place. Why weren't we not on the contact list or whatever it is that the commission has? And I know I've talked with the commissioners before in your admin office there when we were doing our new expansion. We don't sit idly by. We go and try to improve the lifestyle of all the people in our district and help new people become members of our district. We're also part of the CAG team out there at Smurfet Stone, because we like to take a look at what they're doing and if there's any help we can give them. So, you know, we're pretty out there, we're pretty upfront. And like I say, we meet with DEQ, DNRC, Department of Health. We're doing water sample testing right now on eight of our control wells. So we're very upfront with a lot of the things that are needed to protect the water. And with this density changing and with our way that we have it plotted out there, it's just not going to work. So I want to know if there's any way that we can table this for four months and come back and let us have time to talk to our constituents, the other organizations within the Target Range and Orchard Homes, we're just not Target Range, we are Orchard Homes also, to see what, how this is going to affect us, what our cost is going to be and things like that. There's some alternatives we can approach at, but the main thing is we want to continue our way of life out there. So that is about all I have to say. And if at all possible, could you table this for a few months? And we're not the only ones. There's other people that's going to have the same issues on these changes. So that's where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Strohmeyer.
Yeah, I don't have a question for you. Thank you for your comments. And I guess before anyone else comments, I just want to be crystal clear. I think there's some misunderstanding in the room. What we're contemplating today absolutely does not change the density of development that's allowed. We are not changing the zoning, we are not changing the growth policy. What is contemplated here today is some changes to the, at what density level certain standards, urban or rural standards are used when a subdivision is proposed. If you're zoned at a certain density level right now, it is not being changed or contemplated to be changed today. Density is not changing today.
I was just, thank you for saying that, Dave. I was going to reiterate that. This doesn't change anything. We're talking basically about housekeeping in terms of definitions. As far as I understand it, in order for density to change on the ground in future development, there would have to be zoning changes. There are no zoning changes being spoken of today. When Mr. Nagy was talking about this new density, there's no new density. There's no new density. There's no, we're not talking about changes to the growth policy or changes to zoning. This is about getting definitions straight. So I'm with you, maybe y'all didn't have enough time to fully, to read it clearly, but there's no new density proposed here.
It does look like that in part of chapter seven and eight, when you're going from rural to a different type of definition, from one house to eight, in some of the, that I was just able to scan through over the week, the holiday.
So you couldn't go from one to eight unless you changed the zoning and dealt with the sewer and water, which neither of those are being contemplated here today.
Of the planning board, on their changes, are they not also doing zoning changes?
No, they're not doing zoning changes. We're not contemplating zoning, zoning isn't up for discussion. This has nothing to do with zoning.
Well, I still have questions on density.
Christine.
I just wanted to maybe clarify that the only process that's slightly implicated in this regarding zoning is that one parcel on Waldo Road that also has a zoning application in our.
That's not these guy's neighborhood.
This is based on land use designations that were adopted in 2019.
Well, what I was reading in that one specific area on the changes was you had one that was going from two houses to eight. Then you had the size of the legal description and it was going up as high as 20 per acre. So those are the things that I scanned for when I'm looking for, when I just got this document, so.
And what you were pointing at are definitions, not zoning. Nothing is changing in Target Range with these change, with this kind of housekeeping on definitions.
Well, I beg to differ in a way, because I, once I see something like that, do change. Don't get me wrong, you know, that was, my understanding is what's going to happen.
And maybe Christine could clarify this, because what we're talking about again is not changes in the level of density when we're going from lots to number of dwelling units.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking about what, what level of current density, urban versus rural standards ought to apply to. Christine.
Yeah. So in the Missoula area mapping project, the product that came out of that was the Missoula area land use element. And one of the implementation strategies out of that document was to align the subdivision regulations with, and the standards in there with the land use designations. And so what we're trying to do here is just align urban standards with land use designations. So the denser, the denser land use designations are reflected by being included in the urban area. That's what we're trying to do here.
Well, that's why I'd like to have more time to look at it.
Yeah. And I think it'd be, I would be happy to follow up with you as well. Okay.
My name is George Hart. I live out in the Target Range area. And first I'd like to thank the commissioners for signing off on the specially crop block grant at the county extension service. That is, we're going to have a nice gathering of flower growers in April and again probably in September. So thank you for that. As to this presentation, the very first thing I noticed was this was to happen on January 2nd of 2019. It's actually 2020 now. So that's just a minor correction that needs to be made for the record, I guess, because the record was up there. And what I saw that troubled me in that is that there was a prerogative to go to three houses per acre and nowhere in the Target Range plan, which is not presently being considered, is three houses per acre contemplated. The Target Range plan, which predates the applications for just about anything that I've heard here today, is pretty specific about two acre, two houses, two dwellings per acre or one dwelling per acre, depending on where that dwelling was. And that the lines are all worked out. And I understand that the Target Range plan is before the commissioners and that they need somehow or another to approve 60 hours of staff work or something like that in order to get it done. But this particular change, which as a member of the Target Range Sewer and Water District Board, I can promise you that we have not heard of. There were, on that first page again, where it explained the public notifications that were given, there were half a dozen agencies or so forth. One of them was a water district, Missoula Water District, but very few of them, as far as I understand it, are state organized or state licensed entities. They are mostly county entities. And it seems to me that since this goes so far into the Target Range Sewer and Water District, that if the state law doesn't require you to notify us, good neighborliness certainly would have, because you are actually going into where we are the authority. So I would reiterate, Mr. Nagy, our chairman.
Business manager.
Business manager, that's right, I forgot. But I would reiterate his objection and request that you cancel or postpone this thing for four months or so and we'll get back to you. I mean, we'll tell you why or whatever we think about this development. But I realize that it doesn't directly impact Target Range now, but when these definitions are saying that we will go to three houses, three dwellings per unit as the background for what the development is, that definitely changes things. It definitely ignores the Target Range plan, which the commissioners at that time, was it 15 years ago, suggested we get together and do. And we haven't done the Orchard Homes area target plan, in large part because we couldn't bring enough of us together on that one. But we did bring the Target Range folks together on this. And if these definitions are accepted, it's, it basically, I mean, again, I understand your point about how it has to be a zoning change in order to move densities, but zoning changes seem to be initiated by developers. The young ladies remarked that the Target Range comment about looking at agricultural soils, developers giving the city better detailed maps than the city could make themselves or the planning commission could make themselves. That didn't make any sense to me at all in terms of protecting agricultural soil, because almost everybody understands that developers would rather develop on flatland rather than hillsides. And so flatland happens to be where the agricultural soils are. And, you know, if the county isn't going to preemptively identify and care at all about agricultural soils, if what their guidance is going to be done, is going to be given by the Missoula organization of realtors, then, you know, why should there, why should they even pretend to care about such soils? For my part, that is not the major concern. The major concern for me today is that part of this development goes into space that is identified under the state as being the Target Range Sewer and Water District. And you don't have our permission to do that. Speaking for the board, we at least want to be notified and so that we can explain to you why we object to such things.
There's a lot in there I'd love to respond to. So just to, I'm going to get myself to chill here. myself to chill here a little bit, okay? I think Christine did, with all due respect, just bungle the words there a little bit. It isn't developers who are going to look at soils with a fine-tooth map. It's all of us. When we're considering whether to approve a subdivision or not based on soils as on one criteria, we're going to look at the best maps we possibly can on a site-by-site basis, not relying on developers, but relying on entities like the NRCS whose job it is to create those maps, not being spoon-fed by MOR. That is, it's not, flat-out not happening.
I appreciate that.
You can, and I'm not quite done yet. And then you skipped over zoning as if, oh, it's just zoning. No, zoning says what the density is going to be. This is a definition. This says, if you could build at three per acre, then you are going to have to build according to urban standards. This doesn't say, now you get to do three per acre. Nothing even like that. This is a consistency among standards. I totally hear your frustration, and I think if we were to be talking about zoning, the room would be even more full. There'd be lots of commentary. This isn't about that. I feel like some of y'all's enthusiasm is just a bit misplaced on this issue. And maybe that does warrant more time so you can read it more clearly. But this is not, this will not change what can or cannot happen in Target Range. It just flat-out won't.
Granted, it doesn't seem to include Target Range. It does seem to include land that is part of the administrative authority of the Target Range Sew and Water District.
This isn't changing how many houses could be built anywhere.
If we had been notified, we probably would have had a coherent response to these regulations and may have suggested here or there that a word changes or something. But we weren't notified, and we are a state authorized entity. And so, you know, I mean, unless you folks are in a real hurry to change this stuff, I think that you should send an email or a note or a letter to Target Range Sew and Water District saying, hey, part of our definition, part of our subdivision regulations actually enclose part of our area, the Sew and Water District, because our interests, the Target Range Sew and Water District interests may differ from that of the Missoula County subdivision regulations. They may. I don't know. I don't, I don't, did not understand much of what she was saying. But I did hear that part about how in order to be an urban designation, it's going to have three houses per acre, three residences or dwellings per acre. And I know that although you have not adopted the Target Range, the Target Range Homeowners Plan, it is something out there that does seem to differ, and I would just hope that you would give this enough time for at least the Sew and Water District to respond to where you're coming into our space, and then to, you know, hold a hearing again with, I don't know if there's any other state agencies that care about such things. I didn't see the Department of DEQ out there and the folks who've been notified, but that's my issue. I don't know why the Sew and Water District wasn't notified, and when you talk about making zoning changes by these definitions, I probably speak for a lot of Target Rangers that say, well.
I think we've been, I think we've got it, and we're not talking about making any zoning changes, just so you know.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, again, before anyone else comes up in comments, I just want to reiterate what the Chair, Chairman Slotnick just mentioned. No zoning changes, no density changes are being contemplated. If you have a two, if you have a one-acre lot that allows two dwelling units per acre, that will, what we're saying is that that, if you're going to develop it and subdivide it, it has to accord with a certain set of development standards. No density is changing. If, what is allowed on your property today is two dwelling units per acre, and we're to adopt all of this, these changes of subdivision regulations, only two dwelling units per acre would be allowed on that property tomorrow if someone wanted to develop it.
Fred Stewart from the Target Range area. Christine, I understand your comment about the soil maps as, as being that would, something that will be considered during the zoning and during the subdivision and not necessarily be needed on the Appendix A map. So I got that. I did have a question. Just for clarification, I'm having trouble understanding on page 3-20 and 3-21, where it talks about changes to the boundaries, and I realize we're talking about road standards. And the part that's a little bit confusing to me about exceptions to the urban standards for residential development, and then also, excuse me, the exceptions to the rural standards that are on page 3-21. So here's, here's my question, and it's just most likely my understanding. In an area in Target Range that's in the rural area, we have some of those areas that are currently developed at two per acre, and if there were a larger parcel, let's say a 10-acre parcel that was in that rural area, but it's currently, and it's projected to be, I mean, we're recommending that it's going to be zoned at two per acre, does that mean that it becomes an exception to the rural It's not going to be greater than two. You changed that wording to make it greater than two at 3.4.2.2. So I'm just trying to understand a specific kind of a situation where you've got a 10-acre parcel, it's identified as being zoning for two per acre, and it is in the rural area according to our Appendix A map. Am I even making any sense about what my question is?
I think so, yeah. Do you mind if I answer?
Go for it.
Okay. So the rural area is based on the designations rather than the zoning. Hopefully, the zoning comes into play and is reflective, reflective of those designations. But if, I think, so rather than it being zoned a certain density, if a subdivision is coming in, so zone two per acre in, on this 10-acre parcel, so that's 20 lots, two per acre lot size, if they're proposing infrastructure as well as that lot size, then the urban standard would apply.
Okay.
Yeah.
And in the, the first sentence of the rural area definition about 3.4.2.2, that it's an area that includes land that is not serviceable by a community or municipal sewer. Okay, it's not serviceable at this time, but in order for it to be developed, it would have to have some kind of a community.
Right.
Okay, that's, that helps me.
Okay, yeah, that's what we're trying to capture, is where there's the infrastructure and the density.
It might not exist now, but it will, it would have to be in the, in the future.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, that's all I had. This is moderately dense. Thank you.
Hold on here.
Hey.
My name's Ed Taylor. First off, I just basically like to comment on the great work the staff did. I think the new Appendix A downsizing from the urban to the rural is fantastic. Good job. I also like to make a comment about, there was some new definitions or recommendations about groundwater hazards. And I lived close to a subdivision or a little offshoot road off of Spurgeon called Pony Place that was allowed to put basements, cellars or whatever it was called, that has nothing but problems with groundwater, and good job on making sure that in the future that sort of thing doesn't happen. I, I don't remember if the current board has seen any of my pictures of the raging water that was getting pumped out of the parkland there, but I would hope that we can stop that. So, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ed. Anyone else need to say something that hasn't been said yet?
Good afternoon. Pat Nagy-Swarz. I live out in the Meadows West area, which is, you know, the, the area we're talking about, Den Blacker. He is my cousin. He lives in Target Range. I just have an issue regarding the land use map, the, the Appendix A. The only reason I'm here today is, and I guess I did have my head in the sand during the planning board, the consolidated planning board meetings, because I completely missed that, and I would have brought up this question and challenge at that time. But the, the map is used as kind of a guide. In other words, the people who are developing land, they have this map as their guide. And during the growth policy land use element work, they, there were maps for that area, but that particular piece of property was always coded red. It never had any kind of a housing density, that particular Den Blacker Lot 1. The maps were always coded red. I never ever saw any other map coding for that piece of property. So I was surprised. And so, and a lot of it's in the, in terms of semantics. What does commercial mean to you and what does commercial mean to someone else? And commercial to me, of course, never meant high-density housing or, or residential, in fact. So when I saw this, I was concerned that as this gets approved, this then ends up being a guide for whoever wants to develop that piece of property. And I understand now, and I understand the fact that this, this map is the growth policy, kind of like the guide. And I also understand that this has nothing to do with zoning. We have that whole zoning issue on that piece of property coming up in five days, that we start on that with the Consolidated Planning Board. So I know that that's my chance and the chance of my neighbors to try to have a say in what will truly happening, happen to that piece of property. But I am concerned about the fact that it suddenly gets designated within eight units per acre or greater, and, and you suggest that, that that would have been something known through all of the work that was done during the growth policy land use element work. But my point is, is that was never designated as any chance that it would ever be residential. Thank you for the chance to comment, and we will be dealing, you'll see us again the end of the month after the planning board and all of the neighbors do their work about that piece of property. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Ann Rep. Kelvis, Target Range area. I would just like to see to it that the Target Range Sew and Water District be officially part of the notification for things of this type. I think it would really help.
Christine, can we just make sure that happens?
Yeah, so I guess along those lines, a question for Christine. So countywide, when we contemplate changes to regulations like this, in this case, the subdivision regulations, who is on the distribution list?
Yeah, so we have a list of email addresses for a number of different agencies that comes from the list we used for subdivision review. And when a subdivision comes through, it's sort of made more relevant to the area where the subdivision occurs. I want to double-check what our contact info is for the Sew and Water District. I'm surprised, I'm sorry that you didn't get the notice. I'm surprised it was left off, but I want to double-check our contact info there. But yeah, they would have, the intent was to include everyone within the area.
And I guess just in terms of the request for an extension, I truly believe that we are not talking about a substantive disagreement here, but if we were to con, I think four months is, is way excessive, but I don't know if we were to contemplate some amount of extension to allow staff time to meet with the Sew and Water District to clarify some of the points, when the next public meeting might be that we could shoehorn this in.
What's the schedule look like, Emmy?
How often does the Sew and Water Board meet?
On the second Tuesday.
Okay.
That's a good, good point. I wonder if it's possible, just thinking off the cuff here, if Christine could go to that meeting, present to you, you guys do an extensive question and answer, and then the following public meeting, we do this again. So what does that look like, schedule-wise?
January 30th might be a little full for this, but February 6th or February 27th.
Let's go February 6th, then. And that gives you time to meet with Christine at your meeting.
And Christine, would, in terms of how this plays into CAP's current work plan and, and proposals in the pipeline, I, I would prefer to see changes made sooner rather than later, rather than having subdivision proposals roll in that are not subject to this. But what's your sense?
Well, I think, I think a meeting is a great idea, and that'll be able to hopefully clarify what we're, the intent is here. The effective date was going to be today, but we can make it February 6th. I mean, we can't make it today. So I, I would think February 6th would be fine.
Good question. Good idea. Anybody want to make some motions?
I guess there would not be a motion to be made today until.
Could we do part of it, but not this piece? Or would it be better just to do it all?
I would defer to our deputy county attorneys.
Why don't you, why don't you just defer it all?
Okay, thank you.
Take it all for today and then continue to February 6th, because it, the reason I say that, there's not necessarily a legal basis for what I'm saying, but the comment that I heard is that they want to understand these changes in the totality of them.
Sure.
So I think it makes sense to just take it all up on the 6th.
Thank you. Well, then that's what we'll do.
I think that's an excellent resolution.
All right.
So we would just keep the public hearing open.
Yeah, we'll keep this, this hearing open, thanks, till February 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you for all coming. Any, do we have any other business? I'd say none. We'll call it right there. Thank you, guys, for taking time out of your day to come.
Thank you.